How is everybody? Good acoustics in here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, May 2nd at 6:32 PM. Please call the roll.
Um, switch.
Here?
Here.
Here. Mr. Chairman, we have some scouts here tonight that will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have them come up, please?
Scouts, come on, run some, man. We could all join them?
We're waiting for you. So you guys start. You start, we start. See y'all? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Trial run.
Do the minutes first?
Also present tonight, this was Captain Gethwood, Police Chief Senator, Police Fire Chief Rosenbaum, and Service Superintendent Bahary. First, I would move to approve the minutes for the April 11th Special Trustee Meeting.
Second.
Second and by actual, any discussion? With none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the minutes for the April 18, 2023 Regular Trustee Meeting.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
No.
With none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the minutes for the April 24, 2023 Special Trustee Meeting.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Special guest, first on the list is sitting in the year presentation.
I'm gonna have former Citizen of the Year, my two Citizen of the Year, Heather LaCarter, come up and assist me.
That shirt looks familiar, Heather.
Don't.
Okay, so our City Citizen of the Year has been nominated multiple times over the last ten years. Some of the things our Citizen of the Year has been involved in include, you know, a couple of things. Donating to youth wrestling and cheerleading and other tools, coordinating donating and running the chicken bake little by little thing. Sponsoring the live streaming of tribal gatherings, donating to Hinkley South, who were there tonight to the Hinkley Fudge. Assisting community snow covered drives for Hinkley's elderly. Uh, donated, I'm sorry, competing snow covered drives for police and town hall markets, not in the heart of the department, was inundated. Donating a whole semi car to the Hinkley Fire Department for their live burn. Assisting Hinkley resident and moving the corporate place warehouse. Sponsoring a Hinkley youth brake car driver, member of the Hinkley Car Club, donating parts to the Hinkley Memorial Waybreak, assuming none. Assisting Hinkley on that, with the department, Hinkley, promoting the great team and helping the staff group. Supports in the Knight and Knight Career Center's diesel technology program. And in one nominee, he works nonstop supporting and helping this community and our citizens in support programs. Although he recently moved out of Hinkley, the Citizen of the Year can be recognized as his continued commitment to the country loves and continues to serve. The board has put a lot on the wall, although known as well, makes him known as an consistent and constant leader and reliable friend. His contributions to our community are inspiring and are remarkable in supporting Hinkley businesses, providing and looking for entertainment. In one nomination letter to the Hinkley Citizen of the Year Committee, it was stated, as he would say, it's all about the faith. And if you don't step up there, the police board directs review for the Hinkley government. He is an unspoken citizen who would help Hinkley show his love. Other comments include, he's one of the most generous people I know. We are so lucky to have him support our kid in our community. He's one of the kind, selfless and helpful, so that I'm just gonna let him name. He's one of the last who always do his support and help others. Truly so generous and kind to others, but within partners. And as he would say himself, hard work occasional. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present Hinkley Township's 2023 Citizen of the Year, Mr. President.
This is a picture of Frank that will sit in town hall for this year and until next year, Citizen of the Year is announced. And you've got, this is your plaque, this is what you come, thank you for your service to Hinkley, actually we do. When we do. And our brand new plaque for Citizen of the Year, and Frank is the first person.
The community, because without them, I didn't collect what I collect. It all started off, you know, one day when I was at my business, and I cracked a lot of art hill. And I got the chatter, you know, can you put a chat to me from up? Sometimes like, and let's keep this for me. And I went home, and I had everyone come back home. Frigging, it's broken, I wanted to pick it up, and then I got the meat to the road. That whole time, I sure was like, you know, wait, you can do something there. So four years later, uh, I did something, you know, I got my white napkin there, went to scrap down my yard. But it's a case of, uh, you know, maybe it worked my, in my bar or something. But four years later, we collected, uh, if you're particularly, sometimes I miss going home without my chair. But then before you guys want to visit down there, you know? But it ended wrong, it was wrong, and it's wrong for Hinkley Sheriff Center, with the dying of, you know, uh, stranger. Uh, there's some people, I dated, they were like, maybe you can scrap your chair. Okay, great. That'll be a stop, non-press, I was like, oh. And they saw me pull up, and they were trying to practice, and like, man, if you have room, we got the crafter for you, you know? I was like, what am I doing? And they did. They was not for me, you read all the crap, but you get the crap in there too. So it's definitely community involvement. And you have to say, the content of Hinkley and the Highland area, it's a big push. It's not, everybody is offering my service, helping out their crap, to make sure folks are the right people. It's, you know, my case, I live here, I live football, I live my stuff. So if I'm doing most of the work, I'd like to say that for a vote. But we have given up to some other, um, organizations in the meantime. A couple residents that had problems, when I get there, you don't even know that. Or Melissa, um, did you help out with the truck? You gotta, you know, the lawnmower, the kind of, we get their meat. I picked a lawnmower and, and I tell people what I'm gonna do. I said, um, see if it works, we're gonna try to get it funny. And if it works, it goes along, now it'll, then they're on, want them on. Right now, there's four or five lawnmowers that get in there, and they'll probably go for a few hundred dollars. If it's crap, it's hurting the mountains, okay? And they're, they're triggers, it's not called crap, they call fairer sound, or it's called non-fair sound. Not fair to top all the little things that happen. Fair is the game. So it's not garbage, it's not crap. It's, it works out, it's what, what is the garbage? Okay, so it's, it goes right around. All the checks picked me up, and we were on getting. Uh, we, we gave the Highland Church, I think it was $490,000, for like, you would realize it's crap. Right now, it's crap though, okay? So it's working for them. Crap goes down, once it's out there, and I made a plan to, well, it's crap, and then we got a portion of the bucks. Okay, right now, much of the money's. But it doesn't matter, we got, because it holds the bottom. And at the end of the year, you know, it, it might be the, into the $8,000 rate, I spend this year, you know? The fuel my truck, my truck being filled with, the labor I do. And some help is avoided, and that's more, with the president of Hinkley, he worked for me. Someday, I'm getting him to come with me, I made this stuff a bit, or I gotta drop off my bet. I dropped off my bet, and it kicked out the stuff, I knew you guys. Okay, so there's a lot of time, there's a lot of management, because legitimately involved, taking it from the crap from that. So there's a lot of time. But it's through the community that gives the crap, or at least picture that, you know? And I go, here's to all the people Hinkley, and it is not one for all, alright? So, thank you.
Frank. I want to say congratulations. Frank, you ran away before I could say congratulations, so congratulations.
Appreciate that.
Well done, young man.
Just today, Frank delivered a lawnmower for someone in need for me. Today, like, right before he came here. Thank you, Frank. It was. Hopefully, you're gonna go out to dinner, celebrate with family.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have Ben Cutler from Columbia Gas. Please. Yeah, us too.
Again, promise is gonna be an exciting presentation, so I'll do my best.
Thank you.
You ready, open?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just passing out your handout, thank you, Ben. I think you should, I think you should. Do you want my credit card?
Everybody saw where this was going, and they're like, hey.
Why is that?
Don't worry, Ben, it hasn't been done. There's something here that you did not sign, I'm not working on it.
Thank you for your patience.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Alright, thanks for having me, for us to bring you the opportunity to share a little bit about this. This is something we've been asking about many for the last four or five years, and I think this guy would, Andy Conrad, and we've seen that. I saw that we're really progressing to once, uh, more in the country with the background on, on the workforce class. Feature, against the stove, and also to share the request of what we're looking for in terms of, uh, county improvement. So I've heard about it, we'll pan out, and give some backgrounds, and you're gonna help visualize what we're talking about here. But just, just a little bit of backgrounds, everyone's speed. We have a whole unit of delivery station, where Columbia Gas is a distribution company. So we, we work for the gas industry provider, get it into our system, and deliver it to our customers. So we have a west 103 in Boston, that we pick up the gas from, which is an upstream provider. That provider is entirely not pipeline, so we no longer, as of that period of 2024, we no longer have access to that pipeline. Means that our competition, so we have about 2,400 customers, which we immediately runs with, and we're in the rental zone. That are impacted by that system, what that system allows us to do, third homes essentially under 10 degrees. So along the coast, we're doing that station, essentially kicks in from that high drive, make sure to continue to open bring heat and whatnot. But the system is really taxed on those. So because we're losing that freedom, we want to continue being able to serve those 2,400 customers. We need to construct a new station, with a new upstream provider. But we go all the way down south in Marlins area, Dominion Gas, transmission line, on West East and West. So our plan is to tap into that transmission line, and start to construct a new one in the delivery station. And then build a line all the way up on 130 to a district radio installation at Presu, that then go into that system. Essentially, we're building a new system to supplement this system that we're losing because of the water, and that line. So it's not, it's not, it is a Columbia project, but it's a project because of the certain standard that occurred, that we not, uh, that, uh, that beat, that of gas. So that's a little bit of the background on the projects. I will mention, you've been working with Tom Wilson, in your zone of the department, for, we're doing some two stations themselves. One's gonna be on Marlin, and then, and then one's going to be on Presu. Uh, so all that is in progress. Um, I will, before I get into a specific aspect, Marlin, Presu, I have to pause there, see if there's any questions or comments. They look, maybe a tricky project, we're gonna head around, so come on, pause if there's any questions before I continue on.
I'm good. Thank you.
You did a good job of explaining it, because I'm not confused.
Okay, if you look at the second page, the reason that we really need to go looking for a town with approval on is what we call our outlet on Marlin, and then our inlet and outlet on Presu. So essentially, what we need to do is, and you're, when Columbia isn't selling any kind of gas line, that feature won't finish this. We're always in the right, like, right, or maybe it's time to get a right of way, or else we have purchase easement from the property. Uh, for us, rest, uh, in, on, for the point of delivery is made, you know, within the town, meaning it just start a line out to 130. There's no room outside of that, that line. Uh, the northern right wing, has water, overhead electric, so it's east of the right way. The southern right wing has gas, electric storm, this is pretty common with underground construction. Sometimes there's just not a, for you to be able to lay your lines. What we need is approval to lay about 450 feet, um, in the actual roadway of Marlin. And then we have a safe running out to west 130. Then we have the same, same situation on the Presu. The only difference with Presu is we have an inlet and an outlet, that's gonna run the gas to the inlet. Goes into the district regulator station, the front gets cut down, and it's like, right, and it comes back out to us on 130 to leave that system. So what, what the approval that we're seeking is to be able to lay our pipeline in the street of both Marlin and Presu. Mar, uh, Marlin will be about 450 feet east, and the Presu will be about 450 feet west, and then back, or east, and then west. Um, important to know, and this are really important points, A, we, they're not transmission lines, so that, that always give me work with the town with, you know, Andy Conrad, Tommy Junior. Office, um, transmission lines are, so we upstream over the delivery station, I mean, there's no classified as, as distribution lines. And often, we won't have these lines, so a lot of times with the gas main lines, we're constantly digging them up, and I see it looking really, but it, we're not, no, no customers will be tapped up this time. So once the line's in, we shouldn't have to dig it up. Even for 14 minutes, once it's in, it should be in, there should be no need for us to touch that line. I never see ever, it's something that happened, you didn't have to dig it up, but we're definitely digging this up to that customer into this purely to, to kind of go with the gas, to be able to stay. Um, so obviously, it's a big ask, but it's important for us to continue with this project. And also, in speaking with, with your service people intended, um, I'm looking, he looks at the last page. Run the manager, right, to have you know, for the, the way the press, 130. To me, the bullet in this is all restoration requirements that we've agreed to, which essentially the key takeaway is paving the road for complete. And talking with, uh, the fight, and, oh, we have, in Andy Conrad, we have Junior's office. We have no problem committing to the same restoration standard that the city of Runz, I think, has told, and that's two, one of us, 130. So, you know, paving up the road and whatnot, I will be honest with you, not a restoration, that's a lot of that. They go on there, it's a lot by knowledge base in terms of what it all means. But I do know, everything is replaced in kind, and then, you know, full paving up the road, one of the, at least areas that want to serve. So that's, that's what I'm being asked, and I just also wanted to mention, and that, I have demonstrated this communication. This is a big project. Um, even though residents necessarily, we did not get the gas service once we start this work, we're gonna see us. There's gonna be some product destruction of us, 130. We will work with you, you know, we, here, this is a partnership in terms of, you know, making our spots available to residents. And answering questions, local and public meetings, and making ourselves available and acceptable. So, once this project does get underway correctly, before we even start the project, we'll be visible, we'll also have a chance to ask questions. During all the projects, and, uh, be certainly be responsive to questions and concerns. Because it's, it's, it's an important project, it's a good type of project, and I know any time, for, from the guests, you know, can date, you know, text, they, they put in lines. So it always a little bit of disruption, but ultimately, what we're trying to do here is just ensure that we can continue serving those customers on those gold days. And it's just, you know, product smack, easy, so, so.
Like today, you mean, cold day, like today?
It really, it's, you know, it's under 10 degrees, so, you know, that's the, that's the, I hope that's, yes, and so. I have my answer to the questions, concerns, like, first thing, I want to share with you about what we have planned.
What did you say, I know you said, um, 2024, but from start to finish, what is the timeline of this?
So I'm not gonna say anything definite, because all, we have to bid this project out. Our goal is.
But 24 is when you lose the other, correct?
We lose, we lose it, February 21.
So the intent is to get this done before then?
Yes, well, oh, I think that's true.
Okay.
The intent is to get it done before February 22, before, the intent is to get it done when we're, when the asphalt is close to Monday, brother. Now, if that can't happen for religious civil reasons, also there's a school on the other, on those other work. We will have, it will happen, we will set up a temporary gas in the beginning of further month of March. Connect to property, we want, we can just get a whole day of, of ten degrees. And then it will begin the spring of next year during the summer of next year, I would guess that's about sixty percent chance of the fall. This year, a forty percent chance that we can get it to the first. I think the purpose would be to build it next year in the, in the spring and summer, but we also. Don't want to see page ten degrees where people don't have gas, right, so as long as we can get a good mechanism in place, um, I would still say. Start to finish, in summer, this meeting of how about. Three to four months is a good, good, good estimate. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to be in someone's house for three months, you know, the only way we're going to be at last. Um, in these ways can probably be constructed separately, but I, I think three or four months is probably a good estimate. It could be longer, but we have, we're starting to lay, slow this down, whether, like that, but with, you know. Three or four months would maybe say up to five, but it's. Once we, once we bid the project and awarded to the contractor, we'll have a much better idea.
Can you tell me about the bid process? Is it one bid that you're going for that one person who's, or company that's going to? Do all of the work or is it going to be multi-bid?
No, so usually it's, it's one, of one company that bid on the project. They may have subs that they bring in with them, right, so for example, you know, we, we. You guys might have seen the source that one of our contractors that we have working for us, they were quite one number slot in this area. They would have an ability, so we would award the project to one contractor. And then that contractor had subs for traffic control, paving, things like that. So you probably see a variety of different companies, but also plunking against inspectors and whatnot. So it's also not a situation which, you know, I was inviting turn loose and I'm talking, but I don't, we, we have inspectors. Out there and I'm sure, you know, say it runs with, only eighty, ninety percent of commercial people. Their contract, contract, it's more, it's not, it involves as well, so. Um, but yes, to your question, one, one more contractor will probably be able to project, maybe be able to bring in their selves as soon as.
I just think that that's probably the best way for time efficiency. You've done a fantastic job of communicating with us and I just want to tell you that I'm grateful for that. Um, all the emails that you send over are, you know, very detailed and I, I appreciate your keeping us in the loop.
Yeah, again, I'll say it, it's a big project. And we'll, we'll come with some party, but it's an important project and, you know, we, we want to ensure. To be serving these folks and that we're going for here, so we intend to continue that communication. And proactive approach as the project is big, awarded starts.
So for the board, Mike and I have had discussions with Andy Conrad from the county. Uh, relative to the project and I know that you were working closely with them. Um, the specifications that they provided for restoration are over and above what the township would do. So, uh, I don't think we have any issue with that and considering that there's nowhere else for this line to go. And the needs to serve these people, I would, it would be my recommendation that we endorse the project and have them move forward with it.
I agree.
Any objection?
No, I agree.
Appreciate that, thank you, and we'll, we'll be sure to give everybody, we'll say this on here, the property that we're looking at. So you may or may not know, we were planning to do a P O D across the country, not as well. And that did not happen, um. Maybe, so we're, if the P S A for nine hundred and out, for two six eight nine back. Which is where we're looking at, it's a nice big parcel, so it should, you know, it, we have more than enough room there. And then the district regulator, the sock one property on press, we will be going. It's three parcels that they've granted us and stand on for that property and you should have the parcel numbers, you have the parcel numbers in here, you know, handout. Didn't want to mention that as well, so those are the two parcels that we have them actually this station is going to develop.
There's any additional roads you want to pave as part of this? Just saying.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I, I know you're joking, but. Like, it's not, the minutes of paving, right, there's a, be, I'm not a expert, but. There could be a spot to stop on the floor, there's a need to, so we need to go. Under the bay, or the over to get to the light.
Or to the east end.
It's not that long, the road, right?
No, I have to leave first, so.
Ben, are you guys going to provide the trustees a legal agreement then on this? Or what, what, what are you going to require from them? A resolution, something written, so?
Well, I, I was, our town was just to talk with Andy and see what he needs from us.
Okay, well, we got a permit this anyway, county, uh, right away, it's the right way. With permits are always through counties, so we're going to permit this and that will come from some kind of.
Reference.
Be allowing, another thing I should mention is, we also have this project, all of this, Ohio, Ohio, second ward. Second next application, so that is another way of this. That I, we, my guess, I will contact you all as well through, and then so. We'll, 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 one of that will be a process as well, so that's another important work and, you know, approval of this.
What did you get from Brunswick? Did you get a, a, a resolution? Did you get a, just a?
They gave us written approval, never going to grant, say, an amendment for the, they actually, they were willing to enter into the standard law.
Okay, so that is not a requirement.
But it is for you guys.
No, I'm asking what you need, so.
Baby is, is telling, a room was from Tom, from Tom Wilson, his department for the two stations and we already posted a part one. Working on the second one, so we're having those two forms with you guys, but east and west permits. To the right of Mike and driving away from permits for the gold station, we don't have that option to buy a regular workers. And all that would be, once we got this, okay, so when we, you know. By the time you still get it, that'll be the next, but, but, and we, and I discussed this with the board before, can be better. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but this will not be my last time here and we'll be keeping them to speed. Uh, updated and a process is processed as we're bid, timing, um, and everything. It's a big project and we'll definitely work together.
Thanks for coming out, Ben.
Thanks for coming.
Does anyone from the audience have any questions for Ben?
So. Usually we'll be, I think, any lines that we bend. Uh, it's more apparent this time than I ever. But I often do that, and I don't. That's the, that's the line, so that's not, there, they need to go working on this. As we are changing the use of the line, so instead of actually. So it's not sort of like that, that line is going to be retired, it's that we just can't. Gas for it anymore, so we're changing the use of it, so. We, we did, we have to say that we actually did have the gas heater, then you hit up the gas. Should then come bars, so it's that line, I think being part of the, that they can use this, it can change to that. That, 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 yes, we have a dear.
You said, um, Maris would be a school property?
Yeah, so nothing's lost for property, it's, you know, whenever you find, just like this road is. Schools, turn it, then I, testing our own equipment, I believe on the west side of the. For getting the classroom hall, which is cool there. Here, so we did have a, obviously, but the buses never in my desk, coming in your mind, but no, that's.
Thank you for being here, I appreciate it, Ben. He last time, citizen of the year.
He did a little scout saluting with help, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Martha.
All right. So I, you know, I was just on the, the question right now is, uh, seven million, five hundred and twenty. Seven dollars and sixty four cents, with one million nine. Four hundred and forty eight dollars and twenty three cents are pulled in bedroom. And five million, nine hundred and one thousand seventy nine dollars and forty one cents, or, and available primary check. Um, I had several. Resolutions that were requesting of the board and. So the first three, oh, the first one is a motion to approve a resolution. Approving the, our reallocation of two thousand dollars from. One zero 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 dash seven six zero dash seven two oh dash zero 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 zero. Which is the general fund building line to a newly added account called. One zero 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 dash one one zero dash one six two dash zero 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 zero. Which is salaries, how to physical office staff.
So moved.
Second.
Um, quiet.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so second resolution is a motion to adopt the resolution which approves a supplemental appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars. Due to twenty one ninety two dash seven six zero dash seven five zero dash. Zero 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 zero, which is the fire department motor vehicle line. This supplemental addition remains within the resources available for appropriations in the fire fund. Which are currently set at two million, four hundred and forty two thousand. Two hundred and thirty five dollars and fourteen cents is authorized. By the January one, twenty twenty three amended certificate of estimated resources. From the Office of Budget Commission of the Northern House of the White House. Um, this is necessary to allow for a potential purchase of a tanker.
Second.
Moving second.
Quiet.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so the final, um. Resolution I'm asking you to adopt will authorize an amended, which will be amendment number one. Twenty twenty three permanent appropriation and that will include the additional four hundred thousand dollars added to it. So that amount, the new amount effective May second, twenty twenty three. Of total total appropriation for twenty twenty three will be eight million, six hundred and eighty six thousand and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second.
Quiet.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Odyssey.
Yes.
And you'll see these documents, um, attached to your packet, the first small document is. The amended certificate from the budget commission and that's. Amount available for resources for the fire fund and then below is a graph of. The new permanent operation, and I'll provide. Please happy when I make the changes today, and that you guys can sign this week sometime, all right, yeah. Um, final, uh, item I have is, if you recall, um, a couple meetings ago. We discussed hiring a physical officer, we did for the purpose of recording trustee meeting minutes. We had two, uh, individuals to apply, they, they both currently do work for Nathan County judge. And, um. At, at this time, I request the board make a motion to hire Judy Stewart and. For law assistance for the purpose of recording trustee meeting minutes and how many, twenty five dollars per hour.
So moved.
Well, who won that?
I'll, I'll give it away. On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And Judy is currently, well. And then I am the. Reporting secretary, she does a really, really fine job. So that's all I have.
Okay. Are you going to stay with us? This evening?
We'll see, we'll see you wander away, you know, before.
Okay, and, and that, that.
I got four with Jackie.
Are you going to the Sizemore Year or?
Yeah, I might go down, follow that, that'll play the fun of it.
While you're still here, um, uh, move to approve the payment for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four active membership dues to the Medina County. Township Association in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
And, um, liquor permit request while you're here.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, thank you.
Okay.
I was sure.
Well, since I brought it up, it's.
I know.
There's no objection, uh, by police, uh, any comments on that?
I have no objection if the police chief has no objection.
Oh, yours, Martha.
All right, I will sign that.
Thank you. Chief's side.
We. Request of some approval replaces the brand of the road, that's about the calories for the door, it needs to have four companies. The total cost of one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, just include the owner installation.
So moved.
Second.
Move the second, and all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, um, the last thing, those are the point of information, uh, perfect power wash will be here. On Monday, we paid to power wash the least situation in town hall, um, let us.
Thank you. Really quick, while I have you here, chief, I just wanted the public to know, it's on my agenda, we had talked about Brookside and Brookhaven. And the trustees, you guys were all included on that email, chief does not feel it's necessary to put another stop. Set of stop signs there at this time, so, um, um, thank you for looking into that, I appreciate it.
You know, I, you know that that is, you know, residents there. I appreciate that, but you know, as I pointed out to the board, that intersection has been there for two or three years. There have been no verifiable accidents of head intersection, like twenty of slight distance. I, I appreciate your concern, but there's always things that. Thank you.
You know what, too, I'm going to jump. To, and I have a copy for each one of you. Chief, I think I made you a copy as well, I'm going to read it publicly, just so everyone knows, this is a note from Kathy Offerman, who's the. Highland School Board Superintendent, just regarding the traffic in front of town center. Uh, I'm sorry, in front of the new, um, preschool, she said she's going to take a look at making internal traffic flow changes to see if it will help ease whatever traffic concerns may exist during arrival. She also has the traffic engineer who is part of the school design work, um, with, working with O dot, come out to look at it and see if they, he has any recommendations. She said she did reach out to you, chief, as well as, um, Principal Carpenter to discuss concerns. Due to the unprecedented bus driver shortage, they have more parents dropping off and picking up, which is added to the, uh, traffic issues. So they are working on it, um, Martha, I will email it to you, so you have the letter for the, the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add that.
Of course.
Uh, I spoke to the superintendent a lot of the day, um, G P traffic engineer. Next week or so, Mr. Carpenter and I are going to look at them, um. Him and I have several conversations, wondering how to adjust. The traffic flow within the property, so hopefully it eases a little bit out of the street. But I, I'd like to point out that there really have not been any complaints, which department about the traffic, just let me back up once. Basically, this is a small inconvenience for a few minutes in the morning and a few minutes after. So what we decided to do, at least prior to the rest of this school year, is do a lot of drop off to start a little earlier. In order to get more cars out of the, out of the parking lot. And one of the biggest problems that kind of blocks these up, when the bus drop off and then the buses are leaving. They get stuck in with all the cars, they took the hands off the track. So we're going to hold the buses and not let them leave for a period of time to hopefully get more cars. And out sooner and out before the buses leave that block. Well, hopefully that will take care of a little bit of the problem, I know it's a concern with, you know. The superintendent hasn't had any complaints about the traffic, principal hasn't, my haven't. Um, these are the same problems, or three and ground, safety, care, and probably all told to the county. Because they're all suffering from a lot of busts, right? So this is important, a lot of parents who bring their kids to school in the fourth memory. And, and okay, as the school system, it sometimes in the future will. They'll get more bus drivers, which will then, you know, hopefully reduce the amount of parents who live in the school, and further. So we are aware of it, we are working on it, and hopefully it will, uh, kind of take care of itself here, but, thank you.
Thanks for digging into that.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate, I do have a complaint here by, I said, I, I, um, I've gotten, and I think, chief, you had. Given me a response to respond, or that was back in November of last year, that was just one of the incidences that we've heard from residents, but to your point, it, it, it's. You know, just getting accustomed to it.
Well, the, the school's been, you know, almost new school year, uh, we have not had a single accident around the. And then, you know, they, the school been one, and fired, oh, we, moving these schools on the place. But there's, there's a problem with that, because they can only extend the drunk like three hundred feet from the problem. So to do that and move the lightness for the northbound traffic, it's not going to make it to the top of the grade. Then there's a, with a current rider which can't, can't impact somebody's driveway in their visual sight. From getting in and out of their joint as well, so moving it doesn't make a lot of sense. And on top of it, if we're going to try to do that, we will school for it. Not at that time, so. Again, you know, we, we come from a thirty five zone, we come up to a little bit of the bridge in the bill. You know, we have to expect our own republic to drive a few start, that's what we have to say. And if you're doing thirty five, even if you get the forty fives, you're not accelerating. It's like, it's one, very crowded, there's, there's plenty of room to see what they have. So unless we're doing, you know, you know, there isn't really too much of a problem, again, we haven't had any accidents at all. You know, in the last two years, so I'm honored with what we talked about and what we do, I hope we get some of that and, uh. As a concern, I'm, so, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for chief? Anybody from the public for chief? Your question, mom?
Good evening, uh, first, the request for appropriations, I've been seeing two thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty three cents. For the furniture repairs that has completed, uh, on squad thirty seven two, for the fuel pump and fuel filters that every quarter brought. All, uh, okay, I go to the, the, the line, uh, this is where we found out about, right now, about the fuel business.
So moved.
Moving second, and all in favor?
Hi.
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 Melissa, did you second?
Do you second that, Melissa?
Sure.
Yes, she did.
I thought it.
I was going to ask the same question.
Next, the request, uh, uh, repair for our base radio, well, the role of the B C communication. At a cost of eight hundred and sixty five dollars, our radios that's in our watch office are, are only going to, just not something. It has some, some type of power supply, and they are ready to listen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Hi.
Uh, next, the request to move M T fire fire being told from this designated working seven eight per hour with full rate of sixteen one three. In fact, available fervent, one one three, fervent.
So moved.
Second.
In seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Last, I have a, I'm going to extend a copy of it, so your question about appropriations, I'm going to see three hundred dollars, the annual P M. Uh, our six four outdoors, required station, raise that one.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Hi.
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 You want to open, there's no bugger of this one, and when we start up in June, it will be at our current fire station. Because of heavy air conditioning, the air looks, during the warmer months, so it'll be, will be out there, I think it's June, July, August, you know. Which is, it's a little smaller than it's going to frame.
Very well.
Are you going to be leaving?
I am.
Okay, one thing I just want to, um, bring up to you both is. Um, chief and I had discussed, um, you know, the purchase of the new tanker that we discussed at the last meeting, we're still waiting for the prosecutor to. Approve the contract, um, which has not been done by today, so this is our only scheduled meeting this month. So I would like to, um, schedule a special meeting on Tuesday, May thirtieth. To approve the purchase of the new fire tanker, any objections or issues with that date?
No, that I can think of.
What is six o'clock time?
We'll all be here on the twenty ninth.
We all, hopefully you guys will all join us for the parade and ceremony.
No objection.
Six o'clock will work, will six o'clock work for you? All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody in the audience have anything for the chief?
Hey.
Um, just, um, senior purpose to drive it by, you know, to get it to get in.
Yeah, that sidewalk, they call it.
Right, so the northern side, so I noticed it, including the cows and fencing, any.
And that's not going to be impacting our, our turn radius into there at all. You know, they, it's got, you know, we, when we did the trials, and put our truck in it, and swat in it and all that. We knew they were coming, but they said there's not going to be any issue, so, so, well, we'll, once it. Gets off, we're going to go up there and see, but they did, it should not impact it because it's not in the road.
Right, I think it's the old ones, and then, you know, as, we don't, then there's.
Yeah, I, I didn't think so, um, it shouldn't be an issue, I watched a large dungeon, when there's. Uh, in front of me, it didn't even move bigger than our, our even tanker, so if it didn't have any issues, so we should be okay.
But we're going to practice it with the old tanker before we get the new one.
Yes, we will.
We did practice.
Just an F Y I.
We practiced, we were successful in getting onto that lane, uh, with the, the. We practiced. We were successful in getting onto that lane with the, the full-size truck. Yeah, but before.
More of the looks like with the construction, that's what we know.
Yeah, well, and that was a concern of, you know, we, we were able to physically get onto the road, but we had them at the sidewalk, because we didn't want to tear up the grass.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I'm, I'm about.
Yeah, no, I mean, we probably. From when we drove in there, down there, we were going to put it, and see what it was. We shouldn't have.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, it, it will be a tight fit. I'm not saying it's not. But we will be able to fit it. Yeah, that's, that's all that, that we might get it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Have a good night.
Service.
I didn't stop all this. Maybe you know a little more. Just wanted to couple of days, and her stuff come out.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any prediction? For Michael?
Chief, Chief Michael.
Chief Michael. Nothing but Chiefs over there. Anybody from the public? If you have somewhere else to be, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
Good night, Mike.
Just Chiefs that I'm thinking about staring.
Anything from zoning?
No, not at this time.
No, I'm not even saying it.
Is there something that I could have on zoning?
No, I didn't, this, I said, nothing from zoning. Anything from cemetery?
No, sir.
Nothing, no.
So I had a resident reach out who has mosquito larva traps. She's requested to put them on township properties. Figured I would ask the board collectively what their determination would be. She's thinking that she'd like to have one behind the police station. Potentially one at the Historical Society Building.
She wants to place them?
Yeah. She wants to place them. She's very excited about them.
Wow.
She has a Hinkley where she was putting them throughout the township amongst her friends and such. So I wanted to see if, just to look at that at all.
I don't know anything about it. Be able to comment on it.
Well, I guess the intent is to collect the larvae so that mosquitoes don't overpopulate the area.
I was just watching something on TV last night, that mosquitoes are actually still the number one cause of death with venom, like over rattlesnakes, everything else, though. I mean, I support it with that. Seven hundred thousand. That's why you have to leave.
Chiefs in a hurry to get out.
Yeah. I have no objection.
Fifty, sweaty?
I have no objection.
Okay, perfect. I will let her know. Now, if you see a funny thing behind your building, Chief, you'll know what it is.
How big is that? Like, what, what does that look like?
They're like round, like round bowls, but I can show you a picture.
I, you can give her my personal address. She can put a couple at my house. I mean, that's.
These are what they do.
Okay.
And she legitimately has a map of like where she's placed them in Hinkley.
Yes, sir. Can you say your name for us? Mike Easton?
No, there's no traps. There's not, there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing chemical. You did.
So it's like mosquito birth control? Is that right?
I can't believe you.
Have to tell her to rename her containers. Okay, so moving on, quick update on the Hinkley Garden Club. They have obtained the tree that they were going to plant in memory of one of their founding members. And I just wanted to remind the trustees that we had designated the area between the Hinkley Historical Society Building and the property next door as like an alleyway where we could plant trees in memory of people like, like this. So I will be walking that with her to designate where that will be going. Mike will be going with us to make sure that we're not hitting anything before they start digging. But I just wanted to give you an update. If you see a tree randomly popped up there, that's, that's why. Um.
And what seeds?
You know what? I have it in my inbox, but my wifi is not working in here. I can let you know. It was very specific to the type of tree that she, this, this woman who passed loved. So it's my intent and understanding that it's specific to our area.
Here's my questions, is it based?
If it, if it's specific to our area, I would say that it is Ohio species. All right, I will look into it and get back to you, Ms. And I know that we mentioned it at a previous meeting. I just don't have it in front of me, like I said, with the wifi, so I'll look into it and let you know.
Because then we will. Once it's planned.
Correct.
That was my next question.
Correct.
Is watering.
Township property.
Ashrell Studios is already watering the pine tree from the green smudges, since he did ask if somebody could water it every once in a while. They might be open to doing another tree.
I would go. Um, I just wanted to see if the trustees wanted to have any further discussion on the green space, Bobby. I know that that was something that was, there was an article in the paper about, wanted to see if you had heard from residents and, and wanted to offer anything further on the topic.
I have heard from nobody else, and I still do not support attacks.
I have not heard from anyone.
Would you be opposed to moving forward on it, Trustee Ashwell, or do you think that it should table it for now?
Um, I'm not opposed to proceeding with it, but I would like to maybe table it for maybe until, till our June meeting, um, since we are waiting to get the surveys back in the mail. We just have a lot going on right now. So if we could discuss it at the June meeting, if you're not opposed.
And there is one more Highland School spring cleanup through the high school students at Highland Schools, and that's on May seventh. So if you have any neighbors or friends, relatives that are looking down there. I will do my best to make sure they come out, clean up your yards for you. Um, the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony is May twenty-ninth here at Hinkley Town Hall is the ceremony. The parade will start at Our Lady of Grace Church at nine A M. So if you'd like to be a part of the parade, please let me know, and I'll make sure to, I can get you in line for that. Um, three other things that are not on my agenda. There's a electric pole here at the corner that literally looks like it's gonna fall onto town hall. I've tried to call the electric company three times, and I sit on hold for about forty minutes each time. Does, do either one of you have a contact or someone that I can reach out to regarding them?
Well, which pole are you talking about? One in the corner?
Right here on the corner of Rio and Bridge.
I thought about it this morning, and, and, or this afternoon, and me and Jack have been working on that issue. So I gave Mike some other suggestions as to people to contact. Um, one was Buzz Turner from T T X. He may know the, where those lines. I, I gave it to Mike, Melissa, so I'd probably just let Mike follow up on it. Um, so not too many cooks in the kitchen on this one.
Okay.
And also Mike Prokon, Sudan's gonna give Mike a schematic. We have all the lines that go into the police department, town hall buildings, and maybe working backwards.
Okay.
There could be, because there, there is no live electric lines on that pole. So.
Just there for decoration?
Well, they will move. It was, it was.
And we know.
Originally.
It's not the nine-to-five, we got them to come out.
Yeah. And I know, I know the T T X, I think Jim Withrow created that for me. So I'm very familiar with that.
Yes, that in my box. Mike can work from that. He has the contact information.
Perfect. Um, just a friendly reminder, there is a trustee meeting next Monday at six o'clock. That is a special meeting. It's just for the purpose of paying the bills, because we have canceled our May sixteenth meeting. So just for the public's knowledge. And then I wanted to let everyone know that I did speak with the developer, who's been working on the corner parcel here. Some of you may recall, he came out and did a presentation, maybe two or three meetings ago. Spoke with him this morning, and he feels that we sent our water letter prematurely, which is something that I had talked about. Um, he has garnered some information as far as the cost of engineering water infrastructure, and it has come in significantly lower than the county has given us. The estimates that he got were more, not really estimates, they're more like, like almost bid option numbers, and they are significantly lower. So, um, I just wish we would have held off on the water letter. That's all.
Did the estimates he provided, are they like actually non-standard, or?
They're.
Did he say anything about that?
The standards are equivalent with other, what other municipalities are putting in, and actually Sharon Center was a part of that.
So they, they.
No, ma'am, he didn't work with the editor's office. He hired a private firm.
So I'm just, okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there a hint to how many, you think you think that all that, some people that are, where it comes to maybe representing.
There is no limit.
People can buy it and, and, I don't know, we just, you know, often, uh, maybe.
I appreciate that. I actually just had an email with Commissioner Harris, our new commissioner, county commissioner, who's gonna be our speaker for the parade, and he, or for the ceremony, and he had inquired about a car, and I told him that if he needed one, I knew a couple people. So I'll keep you.
And feel free to reach out to Melissa. She's running the whole thing, and.
That's fantastic. And if you wanted to come side by side, I, you know, you could do that for a race, too.
Anything else, Melissa?
That is it.
Thank you. Trustee Ashwell.
Hey, I wanted to discuss with you both, um, you know, we've been talking about the ARPA wish lists with the projects, and I just wanted to, number one, um, make sure that we are all on the same page for Martha's sake, that we all have agreed that we are going to reallocate all of the ARPA funds into a capital improvement fund.
That was what we decided, I believe.
Okay.
And, and utilize the ARPA funds for roadwork? Is that?
Yeah.
Send this to the board? Okay.
Yes.
And capital improvements can be used towards water infrastructure, Martha?
I, the capital improvements can be whatever you guys decide they are.
Very good, thank you.
I mean, this has nothing, once the money is expended for roadwork, the ARPA funds are no longer in existence. ARPA funds are zero, they're gone. Then your bidding, your appropriation, your allocations are just like you'd normally allocate to foundation funds. We don't talk about ARPA anymore.
Correct.
This thought, so.
But it's a way for us to designate it.
It is, yeah, you're.
For now.
You're offsetting, you're taking the money offset by the use of the ARPA funds for roadwork. You're going to likely reallocate them into a capital improvement fund and determine how you want to spend that.
So what I wanted to talk to you both about today, to see if you are agreeable to, is at our June twentieth meeting, so not at the, not at the next meeting in June, because I know you guys are going out of town. Um, but at the June twentieth meeting, if we can bring our list of projects that we would like to see along with the dollar amount, so we can start making some forward progress on that.
Sure.
Right, well, that was easy. Um, the other thing I, it's not on my agenda, that I've noticed in the last couple of months with the agendas is possibly starting, um, a new heading at the beginning of the agenda that says trustee topics instead of, you know, when there's repeat items, I know several times Melissa and I have had same, the same things on our agenda. Jack and Melissa have had the same things on their agenda. If, when Suzanne sees a duplicate, we just put that under a new heading of trustee topics.
I have no issue with that.
Who will designate what is a trustee topic? Just if we all have.
If it's multiple, yeah. I, yeah, I would just say, if it's multiple, if she sees it on more than one person's agenda, just throw it under that heading. So I thought that might be a simpler way to handle it. Um, and then I just wanted to address, I had a couple of coaches and some parents reach out to me um, on some confusion on a social media post, um, from Melissa that you had posted about Ra canceling, closing the fields. Um, that, that is Ra's right and ability to close fields at any time. They have first rights to the fields, and they are responsible for scheduling all events and uses of the field. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, I just asked a question. And it was, I asked a question in private messenger, and I, it didn't go through, so then I asked a question on the, and I got the response, and I, it was over.
Okay, just wanted to address it, because I had a couple of people reach out to me with it. And that is all I have.
Okay, in front of you, you should hear this conference. And, uh, the treatment plan, uh, for maintenance. I sent this, uh, to the prosecutor's office, and then we do back and forth, putting him and contractor. This is the final version that he's okay with. And basically, it outlines the services. The EPA is requiring anybody who does wastewater treatment, plant, maintenance to have a contract with the entity now. So this is, uh, outlines basically what he does and uh, his payment. I think we talked about this once before, but I just want to let you know, this is the final agreement, and I'd like to, uh, ask the board to sign this, to see if it's okay.
This is the exact version we, this is what we stopped at the last meeting.
It, it, there's just a couple minor changes that he had, the contractor requested, so I would move move to enter into the agreement with R B Environmental, Rick Verhotes, for the wastewater treatment plan operation and maintenance. Or. No, I understand, I'll, I'll go with the timeframe on this one.
I'm just, the date.
Yeah, for the twelve-month period from May one, twenty-twenty-three to April thirty, twenty-twenty-four.
May two.
May second, on the form.
Oh, I see.
Okay, second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a resolution for that? The contract?
I don't think.
Want to sign yours?
Well, you made your signature page, so. So I'll send in the copy to. But we'll sign first one. But we'll sign first one. And at the end of the meeting, I'll be making motion going to executive session and uh, we will just be coming out of that with no decision and adjourn at that time. So if you want to wait around, it'll be up to you, but uh, that's the plan. So we'll move to uh, public questions and comments and.
You're not gonna make the motion now?
Only good. Anyone from the public? That was, it was, it was.
That will fall under the category of trustee topics.
We did just all agree that if the she, the police chief didn't have any issue, we were okay to. Which he's, he's best indication by, he has no issue. Or maybe Tom Wilson that has the half of you.
Was there another question?
Nope, this is open, open topics.
Yeah, if you can just stick around until the end of the meeting, I'm going to get some information from you and I will follow up with you and I will follow up with Kimball on it. You said ballast and 606, correct? Ballast and 606?
Yeah.
Which I I'm not sure, I'm not sure how recently they put them up there. I actually just looked at that stop sign on today that it does have the um, cross traffic does not stop
Yeah.
um, on both sides of those stop signs. So hopefully that helps.
There, there is, they're not here yet. The county entered into a, a government public entity agreement with a company called Medina Fiber. And they're in the process of installing fiber throughout the county. This up here, this was up here originally to service uh.
The new fire.
The new fire station. So there's a node here, but as far as moving and spreading out through the township here, they went out and they did kind of polling, seeing who was interested and where they got the greatest interest is where they put the, the front end of their money. So it's coming here, but it's probably a couple of years away yet. But that's, that's not the biggest part of the infrastructure. So, so where they had the most cooperation and interest was where they went first. And there was, there was some hesitance in Hinkley Township at the time, even though we did have that here that because we have a time owner in the area and there's a, an arrangement with them and the township to, and I can't speak for the other boards what they did at that time, but it's what it appeared to be to me that they wanted to maintain that relationship in a stalwart fashion, if you will.
Well, the current cable that's installed here, there, there are business lines for the fiber optic. The difference is what Jack is discussing, the sun going to other communities is the residential component. Yeah, businesses can tap into the existing line. As it is, as it stands right now, I think it runs from our, I'm not sure if it runs north, but it runs up to Brunswick. And so that can be tapped into by a business user. It's just the residential component. It's a, well, it's a whole new installation for Medina Fiber. Yeah, because it does run south because it's our fire station.
The only one.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, so that infrastructure is in place. Yeah, we tried that back in 2000 and when, whatever, 2015, when we were constructing the fire station, we did try to encourage businesses, notify them. Yeah.
That'd be great.
People love with news. Sir, could you say your name again? I'm sorry, I didn't get you the first time.
Thank you. Mike, there's a chamber meeting on Thursday morning at 11 o'clock here at Town Hall. It's the last chamber meeting of the year and you're going to get a lot of access to business owners at that meeting. If you'd like to attend, it's open to, to you. They're meeting here Thursday morning at 11 a.m. Town Hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Is it 11:30? I haven't been in a while. Yeah, you're right. It is, you're right. Mr. Pearl just corrected, 11:30 a.m. at Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Move to pay the bill in the amount of $68,954.44.
Okay.
Looking at all in favor?
Hi.
This time I would move to go into executive session to discuss employee compensation and 753.
I am going to abstain from joining you in executive session.
Very well. You have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Astral, follow.
Seconded by Augustine.
Augustine. Yes.
Abstain.
Yeah.
If you're still here.
All right.
I will move to come out of executive session with no decision made at 9:02 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Augustine. Augustine?
Yes.
Swedek, yes. At this time, I'll make a move to adjourn at 9:03 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Augustine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Dave.
Have a good one.